...
Thank you. Please turn off your cell phones. And with that, we're going to get started first with a look at the external audit.
Okay, this is Joe Kleimak from Toski &amp; Company.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Joe.
Last week, we met with the Audit Committee and went in full length over the financial statements of the district. And today's I'll just give a summary of the results of our audit and certain other -- any questions you may have. The first letter you have in your packet is called "Report to the Board," and really, that's a required communication. We are auditors of the school district's financial statements, which are prepared by management. You hire us to make sure that management has adequate internal controls over financial reporting and to give an opinion on the financial statements, whether they're in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. These are management's financial statements. Significant accounting policies were consistent from year to year. Your financial statements do have accounting estimates in them. We've evaluated the key assumptions used by management and determined that all the estimates that were used by management were reasonable in all the circumstances. Significant disclosures are basically a disclosure of commitments and contingencies in Note 12 to your financial statements. Management was very helpful. There was no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. There were no audit adjustments as a result of our audit procedures to change any dollar amounts in management's prepared financial statements. There are no disagreements with management during the course of our audit. Management did provide us with a representation letter that they responded to all our inquiries, and all the disclosures in the financial statements are accurate. Management did not consult with any other accountants that we were aware of. During the course of our professional relationship with the district, we answer management's questions in terms of certain issues, accounting matters, disclosures, things happening with the New York State SED. That's part of our engagement with you guys. And there is other information in the documents contained within the audit financial statements. We look at those in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole and found that they were acceptable. So let's get to the results of the audit. Results of the audit is on page 60 of the large packet. Page 60 of the large packet is the -- it's called "The Schedule of Findings in Question Costs." This is a required schedule that's in the financial statements because you have federal funds. It's part of the single audit. Again, it's on page 60 of the large bound packet. The first part of that schedule is a summary of auditor's results. We issued a clean, unqualified opinion on your financial statements. All your funds and your governmental activities are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We note that no material weaknesses identified in internal controls over financial reporting, nor were there significant deficiencies in internal controls over financial reporting. There was no material noncompliance with the noncompliance material to the financial statements. However, we did have one finding, and I'd like to briefly go through it right now. It's on page 61, the next page. On page 61, everybody is aware, there's a rule. New York State's real property tax law limits the amount of retained unassigned fund balance of 4% of the next year's appropriations. At June 30, 2012, it was an excess of 4%. It was at 4.5%. We have to report it. It's not a material oversight. The total dollar amounts in excess were about $119,000 of fund balance for a budget of $25 million. The actual amount that was unreserved or unassigned fund balance was $1,126. Should have been $1,700,000. We recommend the district consider establishment of certain reserves or increasing your current reserves, which would have set aside these revenues and a reserve that would be utilized for the future needs of the district. All your reserves we looked at are all in accordance with municipal law and New York State rules or regulations.
Joe, are you saying that you, as a way to get the fund balance down, you would suggest possibly putting it in reserves? You're not saying that, aside from that, that reserves are an issue?
Right.
Okay, so what to do with it if you wanted to do something with reserves would be a suggestion?
Right. So that's basically our only finding there. Again, go back to page 60. For your federal awards, internal control over major programs. We audited one major program. That was Education Jobs Fund. It was an American Recovery Act fund that you won't be receiving in the future. But there was no material weakness identified. There were no findings related to that federal program.
I have a question. One of them was checked yes and then moved to no, and I forgot exactly. I know we talked about in the Audit Committee, but I can't remember why.
Yes, it was noncompliance materials of financial statements. It was checked yes in the original amounts that we sent, and we changed it to no. It's not a material noncompliance. And the district does qualify and continue to be a low-risk auditi in terms of its federal funds programs, which means that only 25% of your federal funds need to be tested, not 50% if you were a higher-risk auditi.
Excuse me, what puts you into the high risk? What would be something that would put you in a high risk?
Some of those no's were yeses, basically.
More than one?
If we had material findings, okay, excess of $10,000 in question costs, if there was material weaknesses in the internal control over your federal programs, that would put you at high risk. Turn to page three of your large financial statement packet. Management's discussion analysis is a summary of the other -- all the other financial information contained within this report. The financial highlights, I like to go through -- the financial highlights, the first bullet point there is the district's net assets. District-wide net assets increased almost $750,000. This is primarily due to actual expenditures being less than anticipated. The assets of the district-wide, the government of the district exceeded its liabilities to close of the fiscal year, June 30, 2012, by $10,250,000. This amount includes unrestricted net assets of $718,000 invested in capital assets, which is your plant and building, and less net of debt is $4.8 million, and you have restricted reserves of $4.7 million. So you're in a very positive, healthy district-wide financial statement. In terms of the next bullet point, in terms of the governmental funds, which is what you use to manage the entity in your budget, the ending fund balances of all your governmental funds were $6.8 million at the end of June 30, 2012, and it was an increase of $277,000 from the prior year. Approximately 17% of this fund balance, $1,126, is available for spending at the district's discretion, unassigned fund balance. The general fund reported a net increase in fund balance of $250,000 during the year. Now, let's go back. The original budget was to use $2,242,000 of fund balance. So you were anticipating a decrease in fund balance. You actually had an increase in fund balance of $250,000. So it was a positive budget variance of $2,492,000 for the year ended June 30, 2012. Any questions?
There were no changes from the draft from the committee meeting?
No.
Is that everything? Any other highlights? No? Questions, anyone?
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome. All right, with that, I think it's up to you now.
Presentation of external audit, that's done, and request to withdraw specific items from consensus items.
Looks good.
Routine actions, approval of consensus items, recommended motion that the following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, jumps us down to public session. At this time, we like to invite anyone in the public. We like to come up and speak for two minutes. If you do, please let us know who you're affiliated with and your name. Pretty sure I knew who this group's affiliate was.
Technically, yes, but...
Oh, all right. Then I won't have to talk fast. Members of the board, thank you for allowing us to address what we feel is an urgent matter and a critical area of concern. Let me begin by bringing to light research evidence provided by the Institute of Education Sciences. In regards to class size, they find that the benefits of class size reduction in the early grades last throughout a student's educational career. In fourth, sixth, and eighth grade, students who attended smaller classes in the early grades were significantly ahead of their peers in all subjects. By eighth grade, they were still almost a full year ahead of their peers. In addition, national surveys of educators show that the profession agrees that class size reduction is the most effective way to improve the quality of teaching and learning. We are prepared to continue listing prestigious researchers and revered institutes' findings if requested in the future, but are primarily here tonight to address our own condition. We are here to propose reinstating a classroom per K, first, and second grade. Last year, one of our own, a recently retired and respected teacher, brought our concerns to the Board of Education in hopes of convincing them to reinstate the first-grade position that was slated to be eliminated and to refrain from eliminating a second-grade position. She, in her presentation, referenced past data that supported her prediction that a significant number of incoming students would raise enrollment the following fall. From August to September of this year alone, 15 students have enrolled at the GLP. This has brought some classes to as many as 25 students, and typically, there will be more before the year comes to a close. In our experience, which a significant number of studies support, the following are critical areas that are directly and negatively affected as a result of large class sizes. Number one, these are formative years for children, when they learn fundamental concepts and strategies in language and mathematics, which in turn support their future experience and achievement in all academic areas. Number two, the more students, the less time per individual, as well as small group instruction, both of which research supports as necessary to reach desired growth expectations. Number three, in the early years, it is not simply all about academics. There are social and emotional needs that must be met prior to and along with instruction in order to realize the best possible outcome per learner. Number four, increased numbers with less support. For example, aid time within the same time constraints make it nearly impossible to reach each child as often as necessary. Teaching to the individual becomes more and more difficult. Having to prioritize instead of equalize the individual needs of students creates an experience far below what each and every learner deserves. Number five, physical space for any kind of movement, group activities, and seating within the classrooms themselves is insufficient for the young learners that we teach. Number six, with two to four students per classroom, small group instruction requires two more groups to be formed in order to address the needs and maintain the numbers necessary to realize the benefits of small group instruction. And lastly, with larger numbers, there is a greater disparity amongst the students' learning styles, abilities, and needs, making them all the more difficult to address. Neighboring districts have gone so far as to set caps in regards to class size, while others have reinstated teaching positions. Many of the districts that produce achievement scores representative of the goals set for this district by the Board of Education have noticeably smaller class sizes, more aid time, fewer budget constraints, and have set limits for class sizes. Within our district, there have been four teacher retirements and one administrative resignation shift. Why can't this money be put back into instruction? The fundamental tenet of formalized education is to fund and support instruction before all else. While appreciative of your consideration concerning the creation of a K-1 multi-age classroom this school year, please understand that once that class is set at 16 students, any newcomers will be absorbed within the other classes, raising the numbers yet again. We are here to propose reinstating a classroom per K, first, and second grade. We feel this is the only solution to the many problems affecting students in classrooms with the large numbers. We ask you, members of the board, to take our request under serious consideration, recognizing that this is the fifth presentation put before the board regarding class size within the past year. Thank you very much. And also, feel free to stop in to any of our classrooms at any time to see the effects that the larger class sizes are having on our students.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tina Powell. I'm a parent. I have two children at the GLP. One is in kindergarten and one is in second grade this year. First off, I'd like to say, the teachers are outstanding. That's what I've noticed since -- my husband and I, when we decided to have a family, purposely chose to build our house in the town of Eden because of the school district. So anytime I have a concern about the school district, I will certainly be bringing it here. And my concern last year, and I didn't bring it here because I was hoping that from the concerns of the teachers and whatnot, that it would have kind of taken care of itself, and it hasn't. My son's first-grade class last year had 25 kids in it. His second-grade class this year, 25 kids. My daughter's kindergarten class, 21 kids. The teachers are incredible, but there is only so much one teacher can do in a classroom with that many small kids. And they invited you to go in and look. I would challenge anyone on this board to go into a classroom of that size, of that age group, and try to keep their attention. Try to teach them something. I'm hoping, with other parents expressing concern, with the teachers expressing concern, that you guys are going to address this and help get these numbers under control.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Jody Bielisowski. I'm a parent, and I'm also an employee of the district. I do have a couple of questions, just to clarify my understanding. Is there a consulting firm hired to look for a new superintendent?
We're just taking statements as a question-answer session.
Okay. That was a concern of mine, also the pay increase for a new superintendent being a small district. I would like to know what could that affect later on, taking things away from our children? And also, are you aware that we cannot hire a physical therapist? We have been trying to hire one for some time now, and are you aware of the reasons why we can't hire a PT? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to the new business on the agenda, Barb.
Resignations, recommended motions. Accepted resignation recommended motion was that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of Labor Michael Mahoney be accepted effective October 19, 2012.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions. Motion carries.
B, there are none.
Do you want B?
Go to C.
Appointments?
They go to C. There are none.
Go to C. Approved change in hours. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the hours for the following transportation personnel be adjusted of September 20, 2012.
Second. Go ahead, Barb. Will you read those positions, please?
Diane Zimmer, bus attendance reduced from 3.5 to 3.25 hours per day, and Linda Christ, bus driver, increase from 4.75 to 5.0 hours per day.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Approved district goals. Recommended motion that the Eden Central School District goals 2012-2013 be approved as presented.
Second. Discussion.
I have a discussion about that.
Okay.
The number-one discussion is improved student achievement, and upon the request of the parents and the teachers, I think that the -- I don't know if this is the right time to bring it in for discussion, but we need those other teachers for the kindergarten, first, and second grade.
I believe we're going to have a presentation on that as well, so we can have discussion about that after that if you'd like. This is probably just for the approval of the goals, though. What do we have? You seconded already?
Yes.
Discussion. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Approved accessing of fax machine. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Brother 41,000E fax machine in the business office asset tag number 80067982 be declared excess and disposed of as the district deems necessary.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Approved ceiling repair work for elementary masonry repair project. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, ceiling repair work by Morris Masonry in the amount of $3,080 be approved as presented.
Second. Discussion. Lisa, you said this is just a formality for the work we already approved?
Correct. I think the amount was $7,000.
Okay. Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Approved home instruction rate increase. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the home instruction rate be changed from $20 per hour to $21 per hour effective September 1, 2012.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
H, accept the external audit report. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the Audit Committee, the external audit was prepared by Toski &amp; Company PC for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2012 be accepted as presented.
Second. Discussion. Michael, if anything to add? You were -- Michael and I were at the Audit Committee, so we went through this in a bit more detail, and you saw it tonight. Did you have anything to add to that? So the only thing that was on there that they flagged us for was the 4.5% fund balance, which we decided that's where we wanted to go to help us in future budget difficulties. So other than that, everything looked pretty good. Any questions? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Approved FBLA overnight field trip. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the FBLA overnight field trip to the Hyatt Regency Hotel in Buffalo to facilitate team-building activities in preparation for future competitions, October 19 through the 20, be approved. Make-up dates are October 26, 2012, or November 2, 2012.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Approved budget increase. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2012-2013 budget be increased by $6,197 to $25,188,612.66 to account for increased revenues.
Second. Discussion.
Read the note?
Yeah, sure.
The district received $438.97 from Target for the junior/senior high, $1,000 from the Eden PTA bicentennial tour for grades second and fourth, $695 from Masterminds Interscholigic Chess for the junior/senior high, and $3,967 from the volleyball club for officials.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Just if I can let you know, John Morrow, parent in the district, did contribute the $695 for the Masterminds competition.
Wow, very nice.
Which was very generous.
Yes. All right, with that, I think we're moving on to -- send out the smart boards.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting me back. I'm going to refresh everyone's memory. In our August meeting with goal-setting, some questions came up about smart boards, and in particularly about how we use them in the district. So we've prepared a little movie for you. Hang on a second. Just showing some of the smart boards and just showing you how they're used in the district. I would like to start by thanking the teachers over the last month who allowed us to film in their classes, particularly Mrs. Schnoffler, who took care of arranging the elementary school filming and filming those teachers. Also, my two student interns that worked with us in technology support, Brandon Mall and James Arring, they arranged all of the filming that was done here at the high school, worked with the teachers, and they also put together the movie. Before we start, though, I just wanted to say one thing to set it up a little bit. A smart board is part of a system. You need to have a computer, which all the classrooms do have. You also need to have a projector, either on a cart or mounted. So we're going to start by showing the film. You'll see that some classrooms that just have the projector, whether it's on a mounted cart or mounted or on a cart, and then show you how we progress to have it with the smart board. But I think after that, it's self-explanatory, so here's our little video. Our first classroom is Mrs. Kanek up here at the high school, and she has a PowerPoint that she's using a mounted projector.
Okay, so you should be on that second worksheet of your guidance notes, and we're talking about verbs now. We've done nouns, we've done pronouns, we've done adjectives. So we named the thing, we've placed the thing, we described the thing, and now we're going to make that thing do something. And that's where verbs come in, okay? So an action verb is what?
Next, we're going to go to Mrs. Quaz's third-grade science class. She uses it for an online movie and for some kind of research.
Some coral reefs. We're going to learn a little bit more about coral reefs than what our article showed up, and then I'm going to take you to an online site, like I said, and we're going to And then I'm going to take you to an online site, like I said, and we're going to take a look at pictures of healthy coral and unhealthy coral. And I'm going to see if you can identify which is which.
Jonathan Bird, and welcome to my world.
The next thing I want to show you guys is from an online site. Let me pull it up. And here it is. And there's a whole bunch of different types of coral. And I'm going to have, I'm going to call on people who think they could come up and maybe point to the living coral and the dead coral, but not yet, so hands are down. When I Googled this, how did I find four pictures of coral reef? I Googled, when I put in the Google bar, I put in pictures of dying coral reef, and I got some great websites. So let me see who I can have. I'm going to have Jake with the pointer. Can you point to this picture, and then I'll have you pick a friend, but Jake, you have to pick someone who's sitting the right way and who's not calling out. Jake, can you point to the coral that's still alive in that picture? Very good. And the coral that has, is dead now. And who could raise their hand? What are the three different?
Okay, Mr. Neal has a smart board. It's a portable one that needs to be orientated, that's setting up the sensors, and he found a novel way to be showing him directions in Spanish.
And Mrs. Janowski has a mounted smart board, and she's using the Smart Notebook software also. And has created some pretty interesting...
For your direct and indirect object pronouns, a quick reminder using the English. She gives me a gift. What's the word for "to me"? She gives you a gift. To you is "to". She gives him or her a gift. "We", "we". To us, she gives us a gift. She gives you all a gift. And she gives them a gift. Bravo. The only two that are really different are "we" and "they're". The rest are the same as your direct object pronouns. For your direct and indirect object pronouns, if you have a sentence with both of them, there is a specific order to follow that in. The "what" and "who" should come first. Remember, these are the ones that are the same for both of the objects. Your "lo, la, le", are these direct or indirect? These are your direct objects. We learn them first, they actually come first, and then your "we" and "they're".
Mrs. Malkowski has a mounted smart board, and her students are going to show us what they're learning on.
Aaron and I are going to play a games. On a smart board. Called coconut bowels.
Did you say vowels?
Yes.
Okay.
And you'll notice Mrs. Malkowski has it already loaded on her website. The students are just going to the correct spot, and they're going to click on the link to be ready to go.
Okay. I was down here.
And there's a word at the top, and we have to hit the vowels to fit in the word.
So you guys are going to explain how you're using adjectives and nouns and things like that?
Wow.
Okay.
It says like adjectives and features and...
We have to like write things in the words.
And then we have to write down words, and after we click, here we have the web tail. It's going to make a story.
Can you read it to us?
I'm watching.
And Mrs. Funk's class, I think you'll catch on what she's doing. She's combining the mobile lab and the smart board.
Where I learned in high school. Okay, everybody has the screen in front of them?
Yeah.
All right. Up at the very top right, there's a word that says launch. There's an arrow in the word that says launch. You're going to click on that launch, and another box will pop up.
You're making me hungry.
Not lunch, launch.
Lunch.
It does sound like lunch, but it's not called the same. And you'll come to this login screen, okay? For yourself. So you're going to pick your height, boy, girl, your hair color, your eye color, and that avatar will be on your screen.
Awesome.
When you earn points by getting map facts correct, you earn store points, and you can buy different clothes and accessories for your avatar.
Awesome.
All right.
Okay, we have 21 mobile projectors, 52 mounted projectors. We're not allowed to mount at the ceiling of the GLP. Mobile smart boards, we have 10 mobile ones district-wide, and mounted smart boards, we have eight. That's the breakdown we have right there. Again, yeah, is it going? There. And just like to thank all the teachers and everyone that was involved, but I think it gave you a brief little overview, and I do appreciate them all letting us do the filming for the first month of school. So any questions?
Thanks for putting that together.
How many, how many boards are you requesting? What are you looking for? I mean, you showed it to us, but what do you want?
Well, that's a tricky thing, and that's why I wanted to say that it's part of a system. Just to put in a mounted projector, that's $825, plus another $150 for the hardware and $300 for the electricity. To put a smart, portable smart board in, they're about $1,700. Mounted smart boards are about $2,000 to $2,300 on top of the projector cost. So they're pricey, and that's why we've only got the few numbers that we do, you know, where our budget numbers are, so you guys know.
Do, what kind of feedbacks do you get from the teachers?
Teachers, would you all love smart boards? Yeah. I, the mobile ones are done by reservations. We cannot keep up with the reservations this year. It's exploded. And there's a few of them here that, you know, we only allow them to have it at two-week time periods, and then they have to give it to someone else, and these are moving all the time. We're moving them all over district-wide.
How much is a projector?
Projectors, about $825.
That's it?
Yeah. Well, and then the mounting hardware is about another $150.
And then where did the money come to buy these that we already have?
I'm going to be really honest, Mrs. Johnson, thank you very much. The primary ones that are, the mobile ones that are over at the elementary school right now was from a grant, right now from Mrs. Johnson, because the tech budget doesn't sustain that level. We're able to get a couple, maybe three or four at the most this year, if we can squeak them out. We're putting in maybe six mounted projectors, but just replacing and keeping up what we already have is becomes pretty much...
Usually just in the general fund budget.
General fund, yeah. That's it.
How many mobile ones do we have?
10.
For all the schools?
For all the schools, yeah. Yeah.
Has there been any research done about comparative technologies? For example, the iPad. I know some schools, some schools are moving away from smart boards and towards iPads for, for different reasons.
I think it's more of a combination. There's some people that are doing the iPads together. I'm thinking Mrs. Musso's class with the autism, they started with six iPads last year, but right now we're investigating putting a smart board in her room, so she wants to go to that level, too. So...
Is there a connection between the iPads and the smart boards?
They can use, a lot of, the similar learning games can be on there so that they can reinforce it together, so...
And how is the, so we have Wi-Fi within the school that connects to all this?
Yes. Yes, for the computers, yes. But they're also wired, so we have both, so...
Is your new Wi-Fi up and running yet?
It's close. We've had a few power issues this fall that, I always say, we're the canary in the tunnel. The most sensitive thing seemed to be the new Wi-Fi system, so it's gone down a couple of times. They'll be back next Monday to hopefully put the finishing touches on it, but yeah, it's all wired. It's just keeping it up and stable right now has been our, our kind of trick, so...
What's the issue about not being able to hang projectors at the GLP? Is it the ceiling?
Yes, the ceiling. Asbestos, yes, so... So we have one, one mounted smart board now in the Room 5, which is a shared room, which has a cart, a mobile cart, but the smart board that we're looking for for Mrs. Musso's class right now, the price is, because we have to bid them out, is coming in about $5,000 because it's mounted and has to have the, the projectors that throw out from the wall. So quite a bit more money to put a smart board over there.
Any other questions, Al?
Good questions. Anytime, let me know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
In their audit report, Toski and Company had no adjusting entries and no recommendations for improvement. I'd like to thank our district treasurer, Mary LaBasco, for all her hard work. Without Mary, our audits wouldn't be as successful as they have been. The budgeting process has begun. The administrators and department heads have been given a budget timeline, and we're notified that all budgetary information needs to be entered before January 7th, so we can begin the review of the budget. Budget must be adapted by the Board of Education no later than April 26th, 2013. So you each have a copy of the budget timeline. I don't know if you have any questions, comments, you want any changes on here?
Does this follow the schedule that we used last year?
Very similar.
So the first budget review meeting is March 4?
Correct. Yeah, that's on the district calendar.
Okay. Two, three, and we have a total of three of them on the calendar for discussion. Three scheduled already.
Is there any way to have them on the weekend, like, so like, parents that work during the day or at night?
We could do that. We had, last year we had one, one session Saturday morning. Session where we tried to get some input on it. So we can do that as we go if there's something going on there.
We haven't scheduled that either, since we're not planning to do it every time it's open a date there. It may happen to be Saturday. Early on.
Just kind of in the middle of the budgeting process, wasn't it?
It'd probably be fast mid-January to mid-Fbruary.
We wouldn't have any draft budget information by that.
And you use it to gather information for the budget?
Yeah. Let's kick that around. Think about that one.
Well, I was just going to say, we kind of rolled out some scenarios. Would you rather A or B? We were kind of in the middle of the process. If we did it at the very beginning, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do any...
Yeah. I mean, we had a decent, decent turnout last time. We scheduled it kind of, what, like, two, three weeks out?
Yeah.
Too bad. Do you want, if you want to schedule something now, or you want to wait? Any thoughts?
I'd say wait.
I'd say wait.
See how it goes.
If you want to do it on the weekend, we'll bring you the Saturday dates in March and how they can flip it in at school.
Yeah, it was late, late March last year, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, all right. Okay. Looks, looks good. Can't wait.
And then my last item is, we need to set up an Audit Committee meeting to discuss the recommendation for the external auditors for 2012-13. I'll email the committee members for their availability.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
All right. I don't have anything other really, it's really the next couple topics that fill us off for all of us, so move forward unless you have something else to...
I have a bunch of things we can cover after the presentations.
Okay. We would, Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Graff?
Excuse me, just so you know, it says Monday, November 17th. That's incorrect date for your future meetings.
That's fine.
Just so I'm just...
Thank you.
Is that right?
Thank you.
Please, Mark?
Yeah, I think that was from last year.
It's the 19th, actually. Okay, so, Mr. Graff, Mr. Schaefer, how to come up?
Good.
We're on record time?
Yeah, same part of the year.
Well, this has really been an ongoing discussion, as everybody knows, and we actually met with the Curriculum Committee of the Board, I guess it was about two weeks ago. As you know, Mrs. Carter has been moved back to GLP full-time. There was some misunderstanding, as we've had some discussions about it, on how and when, and how that position was going to be filled or, or not filled. And, but the bottom line is, there's a lot of work to be done, as we've discussed, and we were asked to come up with a few different options. So I did hand everybody out a packet. I think that was part of your board packet, but I did give everybody a hard copy tonight, just to make sure that you have the current information. In the packet is a memo from Mr. Bugs and the administrative team, and toward the back is the infrastructure of some of the schools, the top schools in the area. It was information that had been requested at, at one point, so that is also included in your package, just so you have it. So we discussed this as, as an administrative team. I know I've had a couple conversations with Mr. Cerny and Mrs. Pinker about it. Ideally, we'd like to fill a position full-time. You know, that, that would be the best-case scenario, is to get somebody back into that curriculum and instruction position as soon as possible, full-time. But in reality, we know that, you know, there's money crunch, there's all those kinds of things where we're reasonable in, in that respect, knowing that there's other pressing issues, as we've already heard about tonight. So ideally, though, we would like that position full-time. But in reality, we came up with two other options, and the first one would be to just keep it the way it is right now, with Mrs. Carter doing that work on top of running the GLP, which, again, in conversation with, with different people around the table, I think we know that that's, it's a daunting task to ask one person to do that. So we would recommend filling the position with a teacher on special assignment. We, you know, the Administrators Union obviously is, is willing to work with the board and the Teachers Union to make that happen, hopefully allowing Mrs. Carter to lead it, but not have to perform all the tasks that go along with getting that work completed. So those are the three scenarios that, that we would have, is, again, ideally, we'd like it filled full, full-time. Keep it status quo, or put a TOS in there, which may help us address some of the other issues that are on the table also.
I'd just like to change the order. Fill the position with a full-time administrator, TOS a second, short-term solution until a long-term solution can be found. The status quo, I believe to be a recipe for not maximizing our short-term growth or our long-term growth. It is, we've been asked to compare ourselves, to get into the top 10 and then into the top five. One of the things you heard before is that the top 10 and surely the top five have, have an infrastructure, which is in essence, research and development. Curriculum for a school district is research and development, and we have cut our research and development by 50%. If I told you Apple Computers had cut their research and development by 50%, you would be aghast. You wouldn't believe it. But that's what a school district in this unprecedented time of change has done. We've also lessened the ability of the principal at GLP to perform all the tasks that go with the new APR. the new APR. There's a recent article that just came out, and I happened to get this off the computer, about East Aurora Schools, and this was written by our very own Karen Robinson, talked about East Aurora Schools, one of the schools we've been compared, we've been chasing, looking at comparing ourselves to them in the top 10, and a few others in the top 5, Orchard Park, Uricoi, and one of the things East Aurora has done is they added an administrator, assistant principal at the middle and high school level, just to assist with the APR process, and a curriculum person to do curriculum, instruction, and personnel. I realize we have, we've heard it tonight, competing interests for limited dollars, very limited dollars, but this is the task of the Board of Education. A baked goods sale might be a good idea, but.
And you know, and that's a good example you gave, because I believe that article also goes on to say there was a huge uproar from the East Aurora Teacher Union.
There was a huge uproar from the teachers, because they had also experienced staff cuts, and they were much more in favor of adding back counselors and teachers. But it's hard to chase the top 10 and the top 5 schools when we don't have many of the things the top 10 and the top 5 schools have. So, once again, fill the position with an administrator. I realize bucks are short. A TOSA, short-term solution, until we can find a long-term solution. Status quo, distant third, but we have to realize that there are some extreme limitations in doing that.
No other options? How about the option of having BOSIs fill that position? Lots of districts do that.
We looked at some of the BOSIs offerings in the realm of curriculum, and there were already many of the things that we are getting from BOSIs, but they didn't address some of the specifics that we needed in the realm of curriculum. And I think Mr. Bugs sent around an email about the things that BOSIs can do for us.
They can provide, I talked to the BOSI superintendent the other day, they can provide every curriculum service we basically need out of their office. And there's a couple of good things to that, is, first, the person's already up to speed, they already have those skills, so a TOSA would be someone who would have to figure the job out as they went. Second, they, it doesn't have to be the same person, so if you need an expert on APR, you can use the person for that. You need an expert on curriculum mapping, you can use a person, a different person for that. Whatever the area is, you can use different folks for that, kind of spread them around, or if you need double the help in a certain area, you can do that. It's kind of à la carte, buy what you need. You gotta buy a certain level, but, I mean, you know how this works probably better than I do, but, but the other bonus to that is, you can get them soon, and you can also, huge discount, we get, that's eligible, so we get, what, 70% back?
Approximately.
So, so that's another option. Any thoughts, concerns about that option like that?
We had looked at the cost of, and please, somebody jump in if they remember this better than me, of having a part-time BOSIs curriculum person, and the cost was pretty significant, and yes, we do get the money back a year later, but we need something, we need something short-term tomorrow.
You can buy 102 days of time for 52,000, which, if you netted against the aides, about 15,000 out of pocket, so, seems like a pretty good deal. But that's just, that's just one path I was researching. It's more.
And how soon would they be able to start?
I don't know the facts, but I believe they sound like they can start relatively quickly, because they have resources on staff, but, I mean, this is something.
Yeah, they would, they would, most likely, they would either use somebody on staff and then post for the internal staff. I mean, all of their staff right now, and I had the same, the same conversation with the district superintendent, and we can do that, and we had that, I think you all received that information, as a shared specialized curriculum service. I think there's something to be said about having the same person, as opposed to just a different person, because they, right now, those individuals at BOSIs specialize in specific areas, but they also are, and this may be something that we want to consider for down the road, as we, as the district gets smaller, because many of their staff right now that they'd be pulling would be, are people who are heavily involved in Race to the Top, and are being funded by those Race to the Top grants, which, at some point, are gonna go away, so those people are gonna need to have other, fill other positions or be let go. So there might be an abundance of BOSIs personnel a year out. They can probably respond quickly, they're most likely going to be just taking on additional duties, at least in the conversation, preliminary conversation is that they would still have some full-time responsibilities at BOSIs, in order for them to meet their obligations to all the districts that are members, and then they would just be filling the days here as we needed them. So, I mean, we could certainly look at that. I don't know, Mrs. Carter, you looked a little bit, worked a little bit closer with BOSIs, I don't know if you have any comments with regards to that? Anything?
We can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I think they contact the local agent for a couple days, months or something. Some of that work behind someone, if that might be the model you were trying to.
Yeah, I think North Collins has met that need, all of their needs along that for a number of years, I believe.
So I don't think they work regularly 102 consistently.
No, no.
They come in and step in and work on various projects, and then they need someone to lead that work.
Right.
So BOSIs have to come in and take a lead role, they still have, they need someone to guide them and say, do this, do that. They just take the initiative, they don't take the initiative, they need that guy.
Right.
I do have a comment. Mr. Schaefer or Mr. Graff, would you please fill me in, because I am new on the board, and I'm not quite sure how I understand this curriculum. Can you give me an idea of what's gonna happen if we don't get this, or what's the job, what's the job detail?
Well, we actually have it listed out for you, a lot of the main duties. Obviously, the first duty of the Director of Curriculum and Instruction is to.
Develop curriculum.
Develop that curriculum. And, you know, we've had conversations amongst ourselves here, you know, and it's not always been the top priority of that person in this district. That person gets splintered off into 100 different directions, and curriculum sometimes ends up.
Being third, fourth, fifth, 10th on the list. With the, with the change to Common Core learning standards in ELA and math, and the push to meet higher standards in ELA and math and 3 through 8 testing, the main emphasis has to be the big four: ELA, math, science, and social studies. That is where, that should be the prime, the first requirement of a curriculum person, is to work and develop and make sure we're performing in those areas. Constantly keeping up with the data, constantly analyzing the gaps, and zapping the gaps, for lack of a better term. That is the primary objective of a curriculum person. And so many times in these days of APRs and SLOs, et cetera, et cetera, it has gotten pushed way, way down the list. But.
Did the board get that packet with all those things listed?
How do you, how do you gentlemen feel about the BOSIs option?
Honestly, it's better than, I would say, my gut would tell me, without having all the information in front of me, it would be a better option than what we have right now.
It would be a better option than what we have. Splintering things up between several people, you sometimes have shortcomings with that, but it is better than what we're sitting on right now. Not that we're sitting on Mrs. Carter. It was a metaphor.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Schaefer.
Now, the candidates for the TOSA, do they have any curriculum experience, or would we need to do training to get them up to speed?
We have several people in-house, but we really haven't opened this up to look for someone as of yet. What would be the cost of the TOSA option? The replacement teacher for whatever assignment that teacher's coming out of.
And we pulled that person out of an existing classroom instruction.
Right.
So it would be a new teacher moving into a new classroom setting?
Correct.
So it would be a long-term sub that would be filling for the balance of the year?
Correct.
What about sharing a curriculum director with another school district?
Then it's maybe, maybe a lot.
That's only option, yeah. I think we had that discussion, Mike, and we could certainly do that in the future, it's a matter of getting us to that point.
Something's happened over time. Tougher parting through the year already.
Does BOSIs offer that option? I know they have other shared.
Well, they, they offer that, and that's what Steve's talking about, is the shared service, that person, that person who may be working in one or two other districts may also work here a little bit, and that's kind of a rotating basis based on their expertise level, so.
Why can't we try the BOSIs option for now, and maybe revisit it in the spring, in connection with the budget process, and see, see how it's working at that point?
Is that acceptable, too? And Mrs. Carter? Is that an acceptable solution?
We can pursue it to see what exactly they can do for us.
Right.
How many days they can give us, how much it'll cost, and get all of the details, but it's certainly worth going in that direction, if that's what the board wants to do.
I would certainly just, I mean, I would guess I would ask the board if they would give us that direction and latitude to move forward with that, so we can, you know, so that we can get that person signed up and here working, the better we're gonna be. So if that's, you know, okay with the board, then let's attempt to take a look at it, and if we can make it work.
Would Mrs. Carter still be working?
She'd have to still do direct, she'd still have to direct.
Which was some of the intent, of the change.
Can I just say some of the key questions we have to ask them are truly what kind of things could they be for us? Sometimes you want to be contracted with them, then they tell us what things we can't include.
That's a great point.
Correct.
Yeah.
If there are things that we truly need, then it's a viable option.
Yeah, everybody likes to sell stuff, you gotta make sure they can deliver it, right?
Well, if it's okay with the board, we'll move in that, we'll move in that direction. If we hit a roadblock and don't feel that it will work for us, for whatever reasons, we'll come back.
Well, do we need to, do we need to make some kind of approval on that, if we go that direction?
No, we're, you're okay, we just, we'll just contract with BOSIs as we do with other.
Just do that, okay.
Yep.
Got to say, if you need, if you need to do something different, we do have a meeting Friday night, that we can always, if we have information by then, we can always take.
We'll begin tomorrow right away with BOSIs and see what they can do. We'll sit down with the group, the administrators are meeting on Wednesday, we'll kind of develop our list of the needs that we have, and go to BOSIs and see what they can provide.
Okay, great.
And the administrative group for a short-term solution is willing to enter in an MOU, as we're giving some of our administrative work away to BOSIs over the short term. We're willing to do that, because we are so.
Appreciate that.
We need it.
And we'll work on it.
All right, so if we, same thing, to get this thing rolling as soon as possible, if we need to have something done, like I said, we're all together on Friday, if we need to have something approved to make this work on Friday, please let us know.
We'll work on it, so we can get something back to the board.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Mrs. Carter?
Your what?
I don't really need the microphone, apparently.
Yes, you do. Everyone has to use the microphone. We all get yelled at for not using the microphone.
That's right.
If you have to slide a little more over.
I feel like I'm gonna be a little bit repetitive, since I had my little group right here, Kmart, and beat me to the punch.
Your warm-up group?
Just back to my floor.
Okay. I didn't know. Okay, so, I'm gonna give you a little bit of some different research that they shared with you. Research from the Center for Public Education tells us that a class size of no more than 18 students per teacher is required to produce the greatest benefits for students. Smaller classes in the early grades of K through 3 boosts academic achievement. Smaller classes are more engaging for students, because they're able to have a more personal connection with teachers. They stay more focused, and misbehavior is less. Students have more direct interactions with teachers, and are also able to work in small groups with classmates more often. We are now asking young students to do more than ever before. They have to think differently, perform at higher levels, and achieve at greater rates. I just spent this afternoon with our department chairs, sharing some of the Common Core Learning Standards sample questions, the exemplars from New York State, and the upcoming PARC assessments, and I think they were surprised at the quality and the expectations that our students will have to achieve. So if we don't set a really strong foundation at the early levels, our gaps can be quite significant for our students as they get older. Yet the statistics of our class sizes at GLP are somewhat overwhelming. I'm sure you have our enrollment, but I want to share with you again, our overall, our average class size at kindergarten right now is at 20.75. Now, I can't put 3/4 of a student in a classroom, so I'm gonna round up to 21 students in a kindergarten classroom. Obviously, that is counterproductive to what research tells us, that 18 students or less provides us the most, greatest results for our students. In first grade, our average class size is 23.75. Again, I can't put 3/4 of a student in a classroom, so our average class size is about 24. And in second grade, our average class size is 24.75. I have lots of 3/4 of our students, so I would say 25 is our average class size. So again, if we're looking at 18 as being our best chance to have the most academic achievement and results for our students, we are fairly far from the 18, as we are looking at our GLP classrooms. Mr. Schaefer and I polled some of our area schools, and started getting some answers, just to see what are some of our counterparts doing, as we constantly try to gather that information, we share things with you, look at what the research tells us. And we were able to get nine to 10 schools right now reply to us on what are their class sizes looking at, because the reality is, we also know there are fiscal constraints in New York State. What are schools doing around us, because they have the same issues that we have, but they're also trying to achieve and provide the best atmosphere for their students. And of the nine to 10 schools we looked at, they varied, obviously, anywhere within their numbers, so, to give you some averages, the average sizes that we looked at was 18.45, and obviously, they're not putting .45 of students in their classrooms, but, so I rounded down, of course, to 18.
For which grades?
In kindergarten.
In kindergarten.
18 was the average, and of course, they did vary, all the way down from 15 and 16. We had a Hamburg classroom that had 10 in a kindergarten, up to about 20, but the average did come out to about 18. The first-grade classroom average was 20.3.
Did they take into account all the things like special needs kids and stuff like that, when, like, you said it was one class size that's very small?
And of course, they don't give me that information. We asked for gen ed classrooms, though. We did ask for gen ed classrooms.
All right, because I know we have one, it would distort our numbers a little bit, too.
Right, and I didn't include those numbers at all, also, so. And the average class size for second grade of the class, the schools that responded to us was 21. So we are hovering higher than the schools that responded to us, and of course, I don't have an exhausted list for you right now, nine to 10 schools by far is not exhausted, and I'm hoping to keep gathering those numbers, just to see, are we hovering at the same as some of our neighbors, or are we not? But as of right now, we know that the research does tell us 18 is the number. We want to hover around for primary education, we are far above that. I can tell you, in my history with the GLP, we are much higher than we were in the past. We are higher than our counterparts, which are things that we always look at when we're trying to look at, are we doing the best for our students in Eden? It's always been a priority to have low class sizes. I can tell you, as, and I wasn't at GLP last year, nor was I in the spring or in the summer, so this kind of hit me pretty quickly once I got there, but I can tell you, from the history of what I gathered, the class sizes were much smaller when the decisions were made at budget time. We had an unprecedented amount of students move in. I always say it's interesting, I think sometimes people say, oh, school's tomorrow, I think I have to do something. So that was really interesting, we had more people move in than usual over the summer. Many of our move-ins happened within a few days before school started, so it wasn't even an issue of having the conversation in July and saying, look how high our classes are in July. It was very, very last minute, within two weeks to a week, two days before school started, and they still are trickling in little by little. So, I know when we met with the curriculum committee, we did, we've been brainstorming, what are some of the reasonable options on, obviously, there's fiscal constraints, it's late in the school year for this kind of conversation to happen. We talked, obviously, in a perfect world, it would be great to add a kindergarten classroom, a first-grade classroom, a second-grade classroom, it would bring those numbers down to the reasonable number that we're used to, and we don't talk about reasonable as in, these are a great number of papers to correct, reasonable in the sense that you do have those connections with teachers, you do have that interaction that you need for primary children with their classroom teacher. You do have that opportunity for that small group instruction, which is all the things you heard from the teachers, it's the same thing we read in all of the research that we know about, which is best practice for students, but there's still reality, you have the reality in front of you, we have a budget in front of us, so, you know, it isn't a perfect world. We brainstormed ideas of, we always start looking at the youngest students first, and how can we address that issue first? So we talked about, would a K1 multi-age be a good option? GLP has had a. in multi-age. We have a community that has experienced the multi-age, where you put two age-level children together, so it's nothing new to the GLP. If we were able to make a multi-age work, we would be able to at least pull some students out of each of those grade levels, bring both those classrooms down at the K and first grade level. It's a less expensive option because you only would need to hire one teacher. It's not the best option, but it's a less expensive option. It would bring at least two grade levels down to a little bit more reasonable and manageable number. It would still not address second grade, but at least for your youngest of your, in that building, it would address some of the issues. We talked about some options of offering teacher aides to help in the classrooms, hiring teacher aides, which at least would provide a better ratio of adults to students. That's always another option.
Are there any aides in any of these classes now?
Right now, we have very, very minimal aides in the GLP, actually across the district. We do provide them in the special education classrooms first, because that is really where the support is required. It usually is required, whether it be on an IEP or that sort. But many of the classrooms do have some, but not many do not, so.
So over K-1 and 2, how many aides are assigned to these rooms?
I would say in first grade, if the teachers have special ed students, they may get brief assistance if maybe 45 minutes to an hour a day, and that may not even be every day.
Just how many FTEs total are assigned? So we have, the stats here list all how many, how many teachers we have, how many aides are also.
Really, we only have one aide cap a day assigned to, spread out at kindergarten, correct?
Right.
Okay.
And first grade only if they have special ed students, and it's not even across the board.
So no one in first grade?
Correct.
Okay. And in second grade, none?
Unless they have special ed requirements.
So if somebody has a personal aide, let's say, does that aide provide services to other students in the classroom, or is it just designated to that individual?
You know, I've had, I've had personal experience in all those, those classes, what are they called? The blended inclusion classes, and the aides do help out the other kids. They've helped out.
But not like it used to be.
It's very rare to have an aide in your classroom all day. That's if a kid is 90. Sorry, I don't know.
With the, with the personal kid that they're supposed, the child that they're supposed to be with, you know, if, if there's something happening next to them, they do lend a hand. They are an extra eyes in the class.
But legally, that's not.
Legally, it's not supposed to, but it does happen.
So I guess the question that I should have asked is, are aides a more cost-effective option than K-1?
That's kind of an interesting question, because they, it may be more cost-effective, but I would not tell you it's necessarily best practice, because truly, these students need to be in smaller class sizes with a classroom teacher, so that instruct, direct instruction can happen, because classroom aides do not provide direct instruction for students. But we also need to try and find a solution that's cost-effective. So I can give you what best practice is for our students in direct, providing them direct instruction so that with research supported.
Kristin, just a rough estimate is about $60,000 for three aides and about $160,000 for three teachers.
Can you say that again, Bugs?
$60,000 for aides, and these are just approximate numbers. $60,000 for three aides, total three aides, and 160 for three teachers.
Salary only.
That's salary.
That's salary and benefits.
No, not benefits, salary only.
For three new teachers, 160.
Some benefits, because of the, it would be 39.
Wait, I don't know.
It's salary and benefits. Salary and benefits.
Salary and benefits.
It would be salary and benefits with friends.
Correct.
I'm sorry, were you, were you done with your presentation?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you had our numbers with our three-quarters students. The numbers, at least we gathered some more, and I can continue to gather them for you. And just a little bit of feedback of just some of the research.
Could you take the standard list that we look at with the 25 schools in the county and say, you take the first 15 and tell us what those ratios are?
Could I do that?
Yes.
Well, she's got nine already.
Yeah, I could. But basically, what I, what I have to rely on is as they respond to me.
No, I understand, yeah. But you can't, as soon as you can, because that just helps put it in context instead of, it's just this one or this one. I don't really know which names is her, but if we had a standard list with the, I knew I was going to do that.
So far, I have Williamsville, Orchard Park, Hamburg, East Aurora, Amherst, Lancaster.
Yeah, but yeah, I guess that listing, that kind of puts it perspective.
I absolutely can do that.
Please help.
Lauren, I just have a question. Have you thought about if we were to add a teacher or teachers, how would the, how would the logistics of that work?
I'm really glad you asked that question, because seeing that it's already the middle of October, that's the next thing. If we lived in a perfect world and you said, "Okay, Mrs. Carter, we're going to add a teacher at every grade level," that would be the next step, is we have to then reach out to parents and say, "I'm able to address the issue of class size for you. Who's willing to leave the classroom they're in and go to the next grade level, go to another classroom?" And hoping that parents really want their children in small class sizes, we can get enough volunteers to do that. But that's definitely the next issue we'd have to move forward and deal with is.
What do you think the response would be? I'm just curious.
You know, it's interesting, because in October, you have, you know, you have students who have already made their bonds with their teachers and with their peers. So, I don't know, I can't even say I'm not a gambling woman, because I am, so. I can't even tell you that, but I think it's a 50/50 shot of maybe, you know, reaching out to parents, sending a letter, explaining to them how really important it is, you know, that we do provide them small class sizes, so they can have that connection and that direct instruction in a small group setting, because I think it's really important, and hoping that our parents respond in a really positive way. But we very well could be sitting here and not being able to fill those classes. I, I.
Excellent.
I mean, that's the reality of that situation.
Do we have estimates for incoming kindergarten class?
I got. Because as this, as this issue moves, it's going to, what is, what is now first and second will then become second and third. So where do you?
Ultimately, certainly, we have to address it through, very minimum, at the very least, be able to address this in budgetary, at budget time, because these numbers aren't going to change as we move into the, into the future. I mean, our, our experience is that these numbers stay pretty consistent as they move through their career in Eden.
So is that to say then that we'll have a new problem in third grade?
No, because third grade has not made that cut to four teachers yet. So when second grade moves to third, their class sizes are going to go down, because they're already lower than we are.
Correct.
And that's one of the interesting things right now, is our elementary three grades, three, four, five, and six are lower than our primary grades right now, which is actually the opposite of what you would normally see.
And I do have to remind everyone that when budget time comes, we're already looking at a million and a half dollar gap for budget time. So we have to keep that in front of us.
So the K-1, the kids stay in the same, in the same classroom, correct?
So if you were a kindergartner who was in the multi-age, you would stay in there again?
Yes.
And there's some huge benefits to that for many students, and that's why you may get a lot of parents who would take that option, because they don't have that learning curve of learning new routines, a new teacher, new, new peers. So for a lot of parents, that's a great option for, depending on what kind of child they have.
I don't think anybody argues about the benefits of the smaller class sizes. I think there's general agreement with that, that the problem is the logistics and the budget and.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, as always.
Well, and if you're starting with an expectation, let's say if this were to happen, you're starting with 16 kids, but what, what does that look like next year? Does it look like 12 kids in K-1? Because we don't know what, what our pre-K.
If you're doing the first class thing?
Yeah, as you go forward next year.
Well, what happens is your kindergarten students would become the first graders, and you would put new kindergartners in there.
Right, but we don't know what that number, we don't know what the number would be. It wouldn't necessarily be 16.
Mrs. Carter, last year for the pre-K, what was the number from last year? You have 48 this year on the, on the pre-K.
I believe we had 54.
54, so you had more last year than this year. And the enrollment this year in the kindergarten is higher. You said it was 75 last year on the kindergarten?
We had 90 last year.
90?
90 last year.
So even.
We had 70, we had less than 70 at, at budget time, and a number that we thought we would get to about 70 or 71 by the time we were, and based on, based on past history. And we've gone well past that.
I think we should add a teacher.
Well, can, can, Mr. Bugs, can you be a little bit more specific with the, with the teacher's aide? Were you thinking if you added three aides for all three classes, it would be around $60,000?
Yeah, 60, that's, that's probably a little low in regards to benefits. I added, actually added benefits into the, or estimated benefits into the teachers. That may not be exact, so it's probably a little bit more than 60.
Can you describe what the teacher's aides are allowed to do or not? They're not allowed to give instruction, is that right?
No instruction.
Would it be full-time all day?
They're assisting the classroom teacher.
Would they be all day long? How long would they be?
Well, if we hired three, hypothetically, if we're talking three classroom aides, one for each grade level, they would be assigned, they would be shared. So we have four classrooms in each grade level, so if you hired a kindergarten classroom aide, they would spend, their time would be divided by four teachers into their schedules. So however that time would be divided up.
And they would be full-time?
Correct.
The teacher would also have to manage the aide. So would it be much of a benefit? The teacher's also managing an aide?
We barely have room for 25 kids in my classroom. Like in a day, I'd like another.
I don't know if parents are allowed to speak, but there's a group of parents over here, and we're not finding that aid. These things you're talking about up there, we're not seeing that as beneficial to our kids. Not with the people are all expecting them to perform, and the things I see coming home that my kids are expected to learn. All right, like a month and a half into school. And you guys have to act fast, because again, like she pointed out, this is the middle of October. My son is in secondary since last year at GLP.
Thank you.
If you guys are going to do something, you need to do it fast.
Some board has more questions or comments?
I feel like the aide part, too, I think it's just going to mask the real problem. The problem is, we have class sizes with 25 kids in it. I came, I, I went to Eden, I was by no means a perfect student, and I can't imagine trying to learn in a classroom with 25 kids. So I think what we could do, that's the problem, and that, we're in the business of education, so let's, let's teach. Let's get it done. And I know we're in the financial problems, and we do, I think we can find a model. We're exactly good question.
Okay, some other thoughts, comments?
I know that my kids went through, through the Eden GLP, and I'm totally satisfied with, all those teachers are fabulous. And I personally don't have to worry about that anymore, but I feel obligated as a board member to give the residents those extra teachers. I think it's, you know, I don't have, again, I don't have to worry about it. My kids are out of there. They're, but they've had a great education from those teachers. And, and I really believe if we want to be the top 5 and 10%, we want to move up. This is the foundation, and this is where it really has to start. I mean, you've got these smart boards and all this other expense, and I'm going to say it, there's a lot of sports and extra activities. Maybe something there, you know, which one of these teachers is going to walk up and give up one of their extra activities?
Well, you're getting into the kinds of things we have to do at budget time.
Yeah.
This is actually a discussion that should have taken place at budget time, and it did, and at budget time, decisions were made, because we have to live within our means.
You know, I'm listening to this, this group behind me that they said it five times at budget, but again, you said 15 people came in in August. You couldn't have prepared for this.
But we didn't predict it.
Okay, anyways, the, the point we have now, if this is something the board wants the kids to do, we also have to, as you just pointed out, Barb, figure out how to pay for it. So where would the $60,000, if we only had one teacher, where is that going to come from? So we have to be prepared to take that money from somewhere else. Because the one thing the law clearly says, we have a budget of 25 x million dollars, and we cannot exceed that. So pretty much all that money, as we went through the budget very tightly last year without cutting any programs, we tightened the budget and tightened the budget, and I know we tightened the budget once more, and even some of the recommendations you guys made was, we were probably tightening it too much. So we're, we're running at a very tight budget right now. And the question I have, and we can make these decisions, is where would that money come from? Because we have to do that.
Well, and another thing for the board to consider is, in 2011, 2012, there was a total of, basically, we're 30 kids down of total enrollment in comparison to last year. So how, how does that affect us, Mr. Bugs, with, don't we get government money for every student that comes in?
Well, it's all figured into a formula. It's not specifically by, by kid. It's all based, enrollment's figured into a stated formula. It's all, it's one piece of the puzzle.
So we are, already are down by 30 kids, even though there's 15.
Correct. That'll bring, that, that reduction of 30 students will bring us less dollars next year, because all the aide formulas will reflect that, 30 students less in all of our aide categories.
Lisa, do you have any ideas where we could get that money?
I'm at my wit's end. All our money in, that we had in substitute cost or long-term subs, that was reduced.
We tightened a lot of it.
So I, I have nothing benefits.
We effectively tried to tighten everything last year, so we did not have to reduce anything. We spent reserves last year, so we don't have to cut anything, and I think everyone's happy with that. But, I mean, this is a decision we as a group have to make. We want to make a change, which is fine, but we have to figure out how to pay for it. It's the law.
Could it be classified as a long-term sub position, a new position?
We've used those long-term sub dollars.
Can, can you go through the lines again, Lisa, and see if you can figure out where something like that could come from?
Yeah, should we probably do that for, can we do that for Friday?
Can you have it for Friday?
I mean, I think back to what Colin said, I don't think anyone's disputing that small class sizes is, is great, but we still do have to make, make a choice at some point.
Well, again, why don't we have it come from the community? Where would they like to see cuts? Because this is, you know, the, the enrollment is down.
Well, that's, that's a good question for next year's budget, but if we want to do this now, we have to figure out what to do with this year's budget.
If there was one position added, would you have a plan as to how to use that? How would you use it?
One position?
Yeah.
If we had one position, I think our option was the K-1 multi-age classroom, because at least it would be the start of taking our youngest students and lowering their class sizes first.
If you go the Bosie's route, in dollars and cents, if you go, if we go the Bosie's route for the curriculum position, and again, these are, these are just rough estimates sitting here, we're, we're going to be, we'll have about a $42,000 savings in that administrative line.
I still have to transfer money into the Bosie's line from somewhere.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah, so that's not, that's not quite enough, is it? You're saying?
What you're looking at, Lauren, salary hasn't been transferred from that line to the GLP.
We need to work through that, so if you can take a look at something and see if you can figure it out.
Are you looking for one teacher or for three?
I don't think there's any way possibly to find three. I mean, unless you tell me otherwise.
Nope.
Or, or if the, or if the board is wanting.
Oh, well, here, here. Here, my husband, I tell him, "I'm asking for three." I'm asking for three. It's a wish list, but I'll take what I.
Well, we'll ask Lisa to go back and look at it and see where, what we can squeeze out, where we can squeeze it out.
See if any of the numbers are looking better this year, but if you want to go to three, I'm just, my gut feel is that's going to require a reduction to something else. I, I think we're lucky. If we can find one, I don't think you're going to find three in the numbers, but I don't know.
Why don't we shoot for two, at least two?
Yeah, we'll look, we'll look at it.
Thanks, Lisa.
All right, any other thoughts, comments? Thank you, Mrs. Carter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
I'm sorry, we.
We can't hear you.
This is not an open forum for that. Those are the kinds of things you can make comments at the other sessions. Okay, moving on to our next topics.
Is this still for the board this time?
Yeah, of course, yeah.
I just have a quick thing.
Yeah, good.
There was an article in The Sun in the early fall about possibly letting North Collins participate in our football program. And I thought that made a lot of sense. They advocated for it, and I thought they made some good points. So I contacted people at North Collins. I talked to Bill Widener, the athletic director, and there's actually. I talked to Bill Widener, the athletic director, and there's actually some interest there in, in doing that. And they think some of their kids would be interested. So I, I would like us to look into the feasibility of that.
We already, we've set some dates and given them some dates to the superintendent. I had a discussion with the superintendent probably two weeks ago now, and gave him dates that he was going to get back, and it's on our calendar to try to push that a little bit or remind him to do that. But yeah, we have that, we've had at least a preliminary discussion about that.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they want to talk about, any other board members? Would you like to cover anything this week?
No.
No? No new news? Okay. All right, this did come up a couple of times, so I'll talk about the superintendent's search process that's ongoing. I think you heard it come up in the one or two previous meetings. A consultant has been hired, and I believe the question was for, for how much? For a cost of $16,000 to the district. A consultant was hired to help us find the best possible candidate for, for the position. The process has been open to just about every possible group or individual in the community. We've asked people who wanted to be on one of the committees to participate in the process, to send in letters. We've gotten some for that. We asked most of the community groups to put a volunteer in, and we've had, we have representation from all the, the, the staff organizations as well. So we have pretty good representation on the committees. They're going to have their first meeting on this Friday, where their, their process will be for them to go through and develop a profile of what, what we'd like the superintendent to look like. Following that, then there's a whole process around advertising, recruitment, and, and kind of going through the information to find out who the applicants are. There's an initial screening done by the, the search committee, or the search group that is assisting us in this. Looking down the dates on the calendar here, just so you could, trying to take you through so you understand the whole process here. On December 13th, the board will review of initial slated candidates, decide on who they want to have in for interviews, and there'll also be some training that goes on for the interviewing process. And then January 7th, 8th, and 9th, there'll be a first round of interviews with the board. Then January 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, a second round of interviews with the board and those constituent groups that I just described to you. So the, the, kind of the finalists in the second round in January will go through interviews with all of those groups. So it's, it's good we have a lot of representation there. January 28th, there'll be a summary review of what each of the groups thought of those candidates, candidates, and then the, this is again, this is a tentative schedule, it could change. There's an opportunity for the board to possibly go visit where that can, that finalist is from, and then the, around the week of February 11th or so, it would be expected that the board would select a new superintendent, and then make some announcements beginning of March around that. So did I miss anything from your understanding of all of that? And everyone got the last update I sent around a couple of days ago from, from the search consultant, and the process and where we're at and all of that.
Now, will the, the constituent group that was the parents, have they been notified whether or not?
Barb's working on that. She'll work on it tomorrow. We can finalize that list up, so. I'll send everybody the, the final list, and that'll probably be done tomorrow. We're waiting for one name to come in from the PTA, I believe. And we'll have that hopefully out to you tomorrow. So that's the question about superintendent's search process. Can I get everybody up to date, and are we good on that?
Yep.
Okay. So don't forget, meeting Friday night at, what time is ours, Joe?
7:00.
Barb, do you know what time we're meeting this Friday? Just so everybody remembers.